Thank you, Councilwoman. Could the clerk please call the roll call?
Board member DeCiccio.
Here.
Board member Lopez.
Here.
Board member Noakowski. Board member Pastor. Board member Stark.
Here.
Board member Valenzuela.
Here.
Board member Waring. Board member Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Gallego.
Here.
Chairman Stanton.
Could we have a motion to approve the minutes from our August 31st, 2016 meeting?
Approve minutes.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four is a resolution related to Section 8 project-based vouchers and Phoenix Starfish placed. Do we have a motion to approve of the resolution?
Let's move the approval.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number five is a resolution related to the Section 32 homeownership plan. Do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
Move the approval.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number six is a resolution related to the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan to Set Aside Vouchers for Victims of Domestic Violence. Do we have a motion to approve that resolution?
Move the approval.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. With that, we will adjourn the meeting of the Assisted Housing Governing Board. Thank you so much to Board Member Lopez for joining us. Now, we will call to order the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. Could our city clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
We are joined today by an interpreter, Judy Holm. Judy, could you please introduce yourself?
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy, soy interprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us here today. We will now move to citizens' comments, beginning with Diane Barker, followed by Leonard Clark.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gallego and City Council. Diane Barker, I'm in District 7. And what do we do on Monday?
It's Phoenix.
Yeah, we get out. Thank you, Council. Thank you. I sent you the card. We get out downtown Phoenix. We're getting some good turnouts, but we want more of you. And it is over at Copper Blues, which is cityscape. It is absolutely beautiful. They have a skating rink and a wonderful, beautiful lit-up tree. Santa Claus is going to be coming to town. We get out at 5:15, and those that are wanting to will walk or run/jog to Hans Park. And then afterwards, we have free raffle tickets to different games, the symphony, different eating retail places, and discounts, nice ones, for food and drink. So, we want to see you there, and happy holidays. And then I just want to remind you, think about, you know, going and doing something different, getting around town. If you haven't tried, like, Rideshare, or maybe some of you do use Uber or Lyft, but try the transit and the light rail coming down. You don't have to pay for parking, and it will be a relief on the freeways. We had an unfortunate thing happen yesterday, and it's a bad sign for the valley. And it can only get worse with more people coming here this winter. Two people were killed on a wrong way down around Chandler, and the people they hit are critically injured. And this happened during the day. These have been happening at nighttime, and so you're going to be seeing more DPS around because they figure that when you see a DPS on the freeway, you may go a little bit slower. And you may be doing the right thing, but what about that person that may run into you? So, let's have a safe holiday, and again, happy holidays.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Our next speaker will be -- did you already call Leonard Clark next? So, Leonard Clark next, followed by Tim Sirakowsky.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. I appreciate the privilege of speaking here, and I thank my fellow veterans in the United States Armed Forces right now who are serving, who have served. That's the reason I'm here and able to speak, and various civil rights leaders throughout history who've made it so possible so I can speak. I just wanted to ask, because today we have items on the agenda related to the water quality we have in Phoenix, which is very high, I just want to ask you to continue your efforts to ensure that the water quality stay excellent. But also, I want to ask even more of you. As you know, we have in North Dakota what's going on with Standing Rock and people wanting their water to be clean. Today, you will have an item on the agenda. I'll speak on it, hopefully. But it's not just Phoenix, but all around the valley and Arizona. Our legacy is mining and manufacturing. We have to somehow square the profits of money with people like Motorola in the past, or mining companies like the old Phelps Company, who, yes, they want to make money and make a profit for their shareholders, but we now have to deal with, like we have now, the metro valley area, a poisonous plume out around the Phoenix Zoo area where we can't even use the water anymore. I just want to ask you to please emphasize that water is the highest profit, the cleanliness, the excellence of our water for our children. I believe a lot of the deformities and sickness and things that we're having now in our population, not just in Phoenix, but around here, this state and the country, is due to the low quality of water, the poisoning of our water, because we have said that, in the Anne Rann style of thinking, that money is more important, more sacred than the sacred, clean right of clean water. And here in Phoenix, we have a chance to set the trend, you know, because we are now, what, the fifth-largest city in the United States of America? And as I said, in North Dakota, we have that going on. So, please, we should start emphasizing that. Profit is not -- should not just be regarded in terms of how much money we have in the bank, but it should be in terms of how healthy our population is going to be, how healthy our children are going to grow up to be, so that they're not poisoned like in Flint, Michigan. Thank God you folks aren't like that, where they had a governor, a state government, come down arbitrarily and tell the city people, like you who know better, what's to do for our city, even though I shouldn't be saying that out loud, because I'm probably giving those folks down the street at the state legislature ideas, like they do in Michigan. They just come in undemocratically and take over city governments. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Tim Sirakowsky. And then, I'm not sure how much time we've been -- the time we've got started, but if we have more time, then Dominic McCutcheon will follow. Tim, good to see you.
Thank you so much. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. My name is Tim Sirakowsky. Nine months. Nine months is the amount of time that it takes to purchase a piece of property from the city through the Parks Department. Nine months. It's too long. When someone goes out and they're starting to look to expand a business in town, they don't want to wait nine months to start construction. They want to start right away. People don't realize this. People will go elsewhere if they have to wait this long to purchase a piece of property from the city of Phoenix. And a lot of time, these individuals start looking, and they have found the ideal spot. They want to build, and then they start going through all the things they have to do at this point to purchase a piece of property. So, I think we need to change what's going on with the property. We need to take and reevaluate truly how we're allowing pieces of property to be purchased. Second thing I want to talk about is, which is all over the news media, it's been over the news media the last three weeks, is the number of police calls to Walmart. This is a problem, because the city of Phoenix Police Department, they're overburdened at the present time, and they're understaffed. And now, most of their calls are going to Walmart. And I think it's time that Walmart, and I know they're a great corporation, I know they make lots of money for their shareholders, but they're going to have to now say to themselves, we're going to have to start paying money to have off-duty police officers there to curtail the number of calls that are going there. It's not the citizens' obligation to protect a corporation. It's their obligation to make their environment safe. So, why are the people of the city of Phoenix paying for protection for Walmart, which is one of the largest corporations in the world? So, I think it's our duty at the present time to start looking back and saying, enough is enough. Go to Walmart and say, we're shorthanded, we're short-staffed, and we need to do something at this point to curtail the number of calls. They need to hire their own. If they have to hire someone else, or off-duty police officers, allow them to do it. Thank you so much. Guys, have a wonderful New Year also.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Sirakowsky. Dominic McCutcheon.
Hi, good afternoon. Last time I stood up here was in late August, and I complained to all of you that the parking lot, the employee parking lot at 44th Street in Washington, had some safety problems. Since that time, I know that all or many of you have helped address those concerns, especially Councilman DeCiccio, who was on board with employees who parked there, their concerns. He was on board with them from the very beginning. My purpose in being here is to simply thank you for making things better at that parking lot. We're very grateful for what you've done. We think it was a change in the right direction, and that's why I'm here. I wanted to complain in person, but I also want to thank you all in person. Merry Christmas.
Oh, Mayor, too, if I could. One of the things, too, Dominic, was the amount of work that Councilman Noakowski put into, too, in the meetings.
I spoke with him, but I didn't know how he was on it, so thank you, sir.
And thank you. And just for the public that knows, Dominic represents many of the labor groups at the -- or the flight attendants, the pilots. Who else do you represent? You represent--
I am here as a citizen.
As a citizen.
If you keep going.
Yeah.
I don't represent anybody.
You're a part of--
I'm just a concerned citizen that wanted to take this on myself, and that's my capacity here.
But thanks for doing all the work--
Uh-huh, thank you.
It was a lot of work on your part. Thank you. All right, thank you very much, Mr. McCutcheon. The final speaker will be James Dibler.
Hello. Hi, I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix, Arizona. I am going to school at Arizona State University. I graduated from Glendale Community College with my associate of general studies. I live in Council District 5. Peoria Proposition 400 failed to pass on Election Day because Peoria residents don't want to raise their taxes on Peoria's humanity, such as new parks, public transit, and more. Also, Peoria unified school district bonds to fund public education from preschools to high school failed to pass. That Peoria citizens don't want to raise taxes on public education. I know the city of Peoria would cannot with a different proposition without raising taxes. That defeat of Peoria Proposition 400 will lead to callbacks in services such as public transit, street repairs, humanity, and more. My thoughts are, Peoria politicians are looking to for savings to cut the budget from taxpayers. Last month, I saw an article in the Glendale Star newspaper about chickens in neighborhood backyards. I know chickens have diseases that cause people to get sick. That Glendale residents and council members should do research before allowing chickens to be new pets. I know cocks, cats, and dogs are the best choice to be a new pet, but not chickens. I hope that Glendale City Council will vote against chickens in the backyard before the council members vote on this agenda item. There was upset numbers at councilmember Jimmy Obama's mobile office meetings two weeks ago about how they don't want chickens in their backyard. I agree with the citizens of Glendale to put this chicken amendment for the public vote, if the Glendale City Council voted chickens could be a pet in their backyard. I did talk with councilmember Jimmy Obama about the new bill called SB 1151. It was included by Senator Falworth and Representative Barter, Mitchell, and Pillinson to vent the city government to make new laws about chickens in the backyard. The bill did not pass at the state legislature because not enough votes went through government that does this. The Arizona legislature is currently bringing the new bill for the House vote.
Hey, Mr. Dibler, time is up. I don't know if you have a final sentence you'd like to say?
Okay. Yeah, I want to have the final sentence. I hope Phoenix City Council will not pass similar laws about having chickens in their backyard. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dibler. Next on the agenda is -- city clerk, will please read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances numbered S-43073 through 43123, and resolutions numbered 21503 through 21506.
Thank you very much. Next is meeting minutes. Councilman Waring, did you have a chance to review the formal meeting minutes?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, on the November 9th, 2016 meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda are boards and commissions. We have a nomination -- a motion on mayor's boards and commission nominations.
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations as corrected.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. A nomination -- a motion, excuse me, on city council boards and commission nominations.
Motion to approve city council board and commission nominations as corrected.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. It appears that there are some citizen leaders here to be sworn in for service, so I will come to the floor and swear you in. Read the card. And then afterwards, please come behind the dais, and individual councilmembers can shake your hand and say thank you for your service in advance. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States-- -- and the Constitution and laws-- -- of the state of Arizona-- -- and that I will bear true faith-- -- and allegiance to the same-- -- and defend them against all enemies-- -- foreign and domestic-- -- and that I will faithfully-- -- and impartially-- -- discharge the duties-- -- of the office of-- Fill in the blank. -- according to the best of my ability. So, help me God. You're official. Thank you for your service in advance. Good to see you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Good to see you just walk behind and meet councilmembers in advance. Good to see you. Good to see you. All right, thank you, leading citizens, for your service on important boards and commissions. Next on the agenda is liquor licenses and off-track wagering license recommendations. Do we have a motion, Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve items 1 through 19.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items pass unanimously. Do we have a omnibus motion?
Motion to approve items 20 through 82, except the following: 21Z, 22, 23, 24, 29, 30, 32, 37, and 52. Item 20 is continued to January 11, 2017. Item 70 is withdrawn, and excluding these items for public comment, 22, 27, 29, 39, 43, 57, and 71.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any comments on those items? Any cards on those items? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next item on the agenda is 21Z. Do we have a motion on 21Z?
Motion to approve 21Z.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any cards on those items? Comments by members of this council? Roll call. DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams. Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Pass eight to one. Next is item 22. Do we have a motion on 22?
Motion to approve item 22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Leonard Clark, did you have comments on item 22? No problem. Any comments by members of this council? Roll call. DeCiccio. Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Item 23 is next. We have a motion on item 23. Councilman Williams.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are any cards on item 23? Any comments by members of this council? Councilman Waring.
Mayor, yeah, this isn't a reflection on the firms involved. I know people very well at all these firms. They're extremely qualified and so forth. I just have concerns that this is a role the city should be taking up, and so I vote against all of these contracts, but it is not a reflection on the individuals involved.
Any other comments, Council -- Vice Mayor?
And I am going to be voting against this due to one item in it, the contract with Ballard Spar, because of an issue that I have raised multiple times. Understand that people involved in public affairs need to be involved in campaigns, but a consultant retained by Ballard Spar, Jan Brewer, has been very involved with the campaign of Donald Trump and defended statements that he made that I found very objectionable. And so, while she is their consultant, I'm going to be opposing that particular portion of this item.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, any other comments? Have members of the council -- Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Likewise, along the lines of Councilman Waring. I think the firms are all good firms. The problem that I've got is I vote against all these lobbyist contracts. I think that it's the wrong place to be spending our money. We just had a big report just the other day, talking about how we're short on police officers and how we're doing a major reshuffling, and to be spending money on lobbying, especially lobbying at the state level, it's just illogical at this time right now to do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman DeCiccio. Any other comments? Roll call.
Mayor--
Oh, wait. I'm sorry, Councilman Noakowski, I apologize.
Alongside with the Vice Mayor, I mean, the past governor actually supported SB 1070, and that was something that affected the city of Phoenix, affected our convention center. So, I'll be voting, though, on that also.
Okay, so it appears that we have a couple councilmembers that have issues with one, but not the others. So, out of respect for those councilmembers, maybe we could do a separate vote. So, if we can adjust the motion so it's in favor of contracts with the Aaron's Company and Acxiom, and do that first, and then we'll vote separately on the contract with Ballard Spar. Would the maker of the motion agree with that?
Yes.
And the seconder? Okay. So, this motion will be for the Aaron's Company and Acxiom Public Affairs. Roll call. DeCiccio.
No.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
No.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. So, I think that one was 6-3. Now, is there a motion on contract with Ballard Spar?
I will make the motion to approve.
And do we have a second on that one? Does anyone have a second Ballard Spar? All right. I will second Ballard Spar. So, we have a motion and a second. Roll call. DeCiccio.
No.
Noakowski.
No.
Pastor.
No.
Stark.
No.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
No.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. So, I believe that one fails 5 to 4. Next item on the agenda--
Three to six.
It fails 3-6? Okay, failed the 3-6. My apologies. Shows my math skills. All right, so next on the agenda is item 24. Item 24 is authorization to accept funds from Arizona cities and towns for access to business intelligence. Do we have a motion on 24?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a--
Second.
--second. Any comments on that item? Councilman Waring.
Perhaps directed to Ed, because I know he was in the -- I think he was in the subcommittee when we talked about this. Just, maybe I'll just make a statement, and then you can say, this is correct. This is not us taking on liability for other cities. They can't sue us for them giving us bad information. This is simply a pass-through to be efficient, to save them money using state data. Is that a fair summary?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, yes. The IGA will address indemnification of the city, and the city of Phoenix will not be doing anything with residents of other cities. It simply allows other cities to use a platform we own for their own design purposes. We have no engagement with their data or them. It's simply, we're receiving money for a platform we own, and that's too expensive for other cities individually to buy.
Yeah, the smaller cities can't really afford to buy this on their own, so they're paying us for something that we would have to basically buy anyway. And the idea isn't for us to help collect taxes in other cities, or increase taxes in other cities, or anything like that.
That is correct.
Thank you. That's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next item on the agenda is item 27. Do we have a motion on 27?
Move approval.
Second.
We have, um, a motion in favor of twenty-seven. We have a second. There are a few, uh, cards on the item. Uh, Ms. Greta Rogers, do you have any comments on item number twenty-seven? Uh, this is authorization to sell city-owned property identified as excess real property inventory. Ms. Rogers.
I have several cards where people have given me their time.
That is accurate. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and all members in attendance. My name is Greta Rogers. On the twenty-fourth of November, which was Thanksgiving Day, a three-page article in The Republic. Vacant City Land Frustrates Phoenix Residents, Comma, Officials. It's an excellently researched and written article by Dustin Gardner of the Arizona Republic. I started talking with the city about this problem that they blind themselves to in oh-eight. That's eight years ago plus. And I was told, "Oh, Greta, it's very hard to understand and know exactly what we have." It's just, and whining like two-year-olds wanting another cookie. Totally irresponsible service to the citizens of this city who are the city and who provide the money you have to be a government. If we weren't here, none of you would be here. And this city wouldn't be here. It'd be just another extension of the brown dirt that composes the Sonoran Desert. I did an inventory, which was like finding teeth in a chicken's mouth. Shortly after I began my request in oh-eight, I got twelve thousand-plus parcels, recorded, listed with the county assessor's office. Dustin has received fifty-five hundred-plus. I accept his total. The city is recalcitrant, regressive, and totally irresponsible in not addressing this potentially lucrative asset that they have, most of which they have no plans for, to sell and get it on the property tax rolls. I don't care if the buyer puts nothing on it. The land produces property tax because none of us is tax-exempt. Develop a plan, which you don't have, and execute the plan within a reasonable timeframe for that which you have determined you can achieve as a sale. Now, a lot of these parcels are unusable as far as development is concerned. They're little strips and spots of land that are small and undevelopable. That's fine. Split it down the middle, quit claim to A and quit claim to B, and that little piece of land will add to theirs, and it will produce property tax. The large parcels for which you, most of which you have no plan at all, right now, nor for the future, sell. And if you have to go back and buy them if they aren't developed by whomever buys them, and even if they are, and you need it for X, Y, or Z, and you can't find any other resource, then buy it. Your operation and management of money in this city has become casual to totally unacceptable. And I've been on you like a rat to cheese for many years on this. And I'm just one member who contributes to the piggy bank. I find your excuses bottomless and vacant. I want you to address this in a meaningful way as responsible elected officials. And I use the term responsible with question. And responsible, appointed, hired, management officials. I have an appointment scheduled for next month with Paul Blue, who's been given this responsibility, and I look forward to it. Also, when you're talking about listing properties, I know you've used Jones Lang LaSalle. They're not the only game or, or option in town. I have no objection to them. But some of your properties are not zoned commercial, and that's what they are. They are reputable, nationally-recognized, commercial brokerage. Those properties which are zoned residentially, you put with the same quality of residential broker, probably one like Jones that has national coverage, not some local. And you also aren't limited to listing with one broker. An owner has the choice of selecting a broker. That doesn't matter whether you're a private individual or a governmental entity. Let's put the plan together, and you on the council have to push the gas pedal on this and follow up as responsible elected officials with management to get quarterly or at the very least semi-annual reports on this. Over two years ago, you listed twelve properties, twelve! What a joke with Jones Lang LaSalle. And I said to Paul last week after the subcommittee meeting, I said, "How many of those did he, did he sell? We've never had a report on it." The city deserves a report. I don't care if it's two sentences in the paper. We deserve to know what the devil is going on. Live up to your obligation to the citizens of this city who are your financial resource. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rogers. Mr. Leonard Clark? Thank you very much. All right, so on item twenty-seven, we have a motion. We have a second. Are there any comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego. Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is item number twenty-nine. Uh, twenty-nine is proposed amendments to the two thousand sixteen-nineteen MOU between City of Phoenix and AFSCME, twenty-nine sixty. Is there a motion on item twenty-nine?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Leonard Clark, do you want to bring testimony on that item? And that's all right, I appreciate that. Any comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Uh, yes. Next item on the agenda is item thirty-two? Is that right? Or thirty, I'm sorry, item thirty.
Move approval of item thirty, judicial salary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any cards on that item? And are there any cards, no cards? Any comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. That item passes seven to two. Next item is item thirty-two. Do we have a motion on thirty-two?
Move approval of item thirty-two, canal crossings.
Second.
Motion and a second. Councilman Waring, did you have comments?
I did, thank you. I had just questions for our arts, or maybe a statement for our arts team. So, this is, uh, an arts project, but it is also a safety, uh, it's part of a bigger safety project regarding crossings for people who are using the canal as a trail to go across streets. Um, there's also been an element of, uh, people living on the canals and so forth. This will hopefully address that, at least in some small fashion. It'll also make it more usable, uh, with the overheads, you know, for heat exhaustion and so forth, any families that are out there. And it will leverage monies from, I believe it was APS. There's a lot of electrical there, sort of getting a bigger bang for the city buck. So there's a lot of reasons that this is more of a safety concern than, um, than it is just an art project. Is that a fair statement?
Mayor and Councilman Waring, that is correct, and it's, uh, Salt River Project.
Salt River Project. My apologies, yes, to
It's quite all right.
Okay?
You have your answer. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
That is, yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark. Valenzuela. Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is item thirty-seven. Do we have a motion on thirty-seven?
Move approval of item thirty-seven.
We have a motion and a
I'm declaring a conflict.
Second? All right. Is there any cards on thirty-seven? Councilman Waring is declaring a potential conflict because you serve on the Board of Sark, right? So he has a financial interest, but, uh, out of a safer course action, is going to declare a potential conflict. Are there any, um, questions or comments by members of this council? All right. It's a really cool project. I'm excited about it. Beneficial beans, there's really good coffee. All right, uh, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark. Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes eight to zero. Eight. We have one potential conflict. Then thirty-nine is the next item. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on thirty-nine?
Move approval of item thirty-nine.
We have a motion and a second. Dominic Rose Sepowitz, do you have comments on this? Good to see you.
Thank you, sir. Hi, um, I, I want to tell you about the starfish bracelets that are sitting in front of you. This is, um, uh, so I'm an associate professor at ASU in the School of Social Work, and I run the Office of Sex Trafficking Intervention Research. So the starfish in front of you on that bracelet represents the starfish and the starfish story, which is a little boy walking down a beach, um, picking up starfish after a storm and throwing them in, and an old man comes up and says, "Why are you bothering?" And the little boy says, "Well, I think it matters to this one." So, uh, the, the proposal in front of you is not us saving anyone. We don't think that we're going to help save anyone who's in sex trafficking situations. But what we do think is that once they land back in the water, they need some, some help to not get washed up again. It's quite simple to us that we can't say like, "Stop doing this. Stop being abused, stop being victimized." That we need to give them some of the services that they, um, that really might be helpful to get them out. So this is a partnership between the City of Phoenix and Arizona State University. The City of Phoenix, um, has this beautiful opportunity to, to create a housing campus for people who have been sex trafficked. And ASU is committing to providing the therapeutic service overlay, um, mental health, trauma-focused treatment, um, substance abuse, and different programming. We want to institute a program called the Sanctuary Model, which is a trauma-focused, uh, perspective that everyone involved in the campus would have, including maintenance, all of the, uh, caseworkers, anyone who works with these clients. So I just wanted to explain, uh, the bracelet in front of you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um, so we have a motion on thirty-nine. We have a second. Councilman Waring, you have comments on thirty-nine?
Thank you. Uh, first, I'm glad Dominique told the starfish story. Anybody who watches these meetings knows I am not the correct person to tell the cute animal story with a message, so, uh, so there's that. So I appreciate she explained why it's called Starfish House. I do just want, I'm also not the guy who's always, you know, the one up here thanking staff for their hard work. I will acknowledge that. So sometimes I'm probably wrong about that, but I will say, in this case, uh, the staff, there's too many people to mention, but, uh, city staff really was innovative, did a phenomenal job, um, uh, turning a, a potential problem into a, a great situation using a facility, uh, for a purpose for which it is, it is beautifully laid out. So they really thought outside the box. They made it work across departments, also not always a city strength, so breaking through those silos and making this happen, I, I thought that was really outstanding. Would not have happened, uh, without them, and I think this will do some good work and will help some, uh, some families that, that badly need the help, uh, because they are in terrible circumstance. So I appreciate very much the people who came down here to support this today, but, but really appreciate the staff's work on this one, where they came up with something that maybe a lot of people wouldn't have recognized the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Waring. Any other comments by members of this council? Vice Mayor.
And congratulations to Councilman Waring and the Human Trafficking Task Force. We have, uh, probably as the City of Phoenix, not primary jurisdiction over this issue, but it's wonderful when we can find tools that we already have to address this problem. So congratulations to the task force.
First in the kind.
I think it is the first in the country. This really is a neat partnership, and this was one where that, the Housing Subcommittee had challenged the Housing Department, "Could we do something to support domestic violence victims and, uh, victims of human trafficking just a few months ago?" And it's already moving forward, so it's exciting that we were able to do this on a quick timeframe and across several departments. So thank you to Neighborhood Services for their partnership. Congratulations to Deanna and her team as well for working across several departments. It was a fairly complicated project that came together because several council people, congratulations to Councilwoman Stark as well, worked together, several departments, um, several nonprofits, and Arizona State University. So not an easy project, but one that I think will put Phoenix on the map in a good way.
Thank you very much. Other comments by members of this council? Councilman Valenzuela?
No, I was, I was ready to vote, but I'm absolutely, uh, supportive of this project and of course our efforts, and this is one of those topics that I've been, uh, very proud of this council for just unanimously supporting, uh, in the past, and, uh, and I'm, I'm sure that's going to continue today and in the future.
Thank you very much. All right. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes unanimously for this, uh, city council. Thanks for your testimony, and, uh, do great work. It's going to be an awesome project. Uh, next item on the agenda is item forty-three. Uh, is there a motion on item forty-three?
Move approval of item forty-three related to Head Start.
Second.
Leonard Clark, do you want testimony on forty-three?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Leonard Clark. Um, I just want to urge you to vote for this Head Start appropriation. I like the fact that it's going to extend the, the hours for children all the way up to five years of age. Uh, I want to thank the Booker T. Washington Group and the Greater Phoenix Urban League. Hope I said that right, for the work they do and the other organizations. Um, unfortunately, as you know, in Phoenix, many more of our other children, once they get into kindergarten or like first grade, um, we don't have the money because we are like last in the state. No fault of Phoenix, because Phoenix leads the way. I mean, that's the way we are. But down the street, our folks, they don't believe in what you're doing because they don't have full-day, uh, classes for children that are first grade, uh, younger, kindergarten. And we all know how important it is. So this is very instrumental and powerful. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Leonard Clark. Um, I just want to urge you to vote for this Head Start appropriation. I like the fact that it's going to extend the, the hours for children all the way up to five years of age. Uh, I want to thank the Booker T. Washington Group and the Greater Phoenix Urban League, hope I said that right, for the work they do, and the other organizations. Um, unfortunately, as you know, in Phoenix, many more of our other children, once they get into kindergarten or, like, first grade, um, we don't have the money because we are, like, last in the state. No fault of Phoenix, because Phoenix leads the way. I mean, that's the way we are. But down the street, our folks, they don't believe in what you're doing because they don't have full-day, uh, classes for children that are first grade, uh, younger, kindergarten, and we all know how important it is. So this is very instrumental and powerful. I hope our friends at the legislature are watching. Instead of just coming down and telling cities what they can and can't do, maybe they ought to take an example from the City of Phoenix and actually try to have our children in kindergarten have full-day classes, as many top psychologists, people around the country and the world, well-respected, have said that children need. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. We have a motion in favor of forty-three, a second. Any comments from this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor. Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. That item passes unanimously. Next item is fifty-two.
Move approval of item fifty-two, Sky Harbor Terminal Three Modernization Art.
Second.
A motion. We have a second. Any cards on this item? Any comments, members of the council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor. Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego. Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Fifty-seven. Do we have a motion on fifty-seven?
Move approval of item fifty-seven, Deer Valley Water Treatment Plant Rehabilitation.
Yes. Let me, second. I'm really in support of this, ma'am.
A motion and a second. Leonard Clark, do you have comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Leonard Clark, and this will be my last time, so you, all those other times I've written down, uh, to the mayor, you could just go ahead and mark me out. But, um, I just want to strongly urge you to vote for this. All of us, um, many of us in the valley are familiar by driving by Metro Center and seeing the Deer Water, Deer Valley Water Treatment Plant, and, uh, it's good to know that our city's trying to stay, uh, in the top as far as water quality, and, uh, I again urge you, as with this measure, anything dealing with our water, um, water is sacred. It's, you can't put a monetary value on water, even though I know it's done, and in this day and age, it's coming to the level of consciousness, not just in the city, but around the nation and the world, that we have to stop putting oil, we have to stop putting manufacturing that pollutes the water that our children will drink as secondary. So hopefully by voting for this, you show that you care for your grandchildren and your children more than you care for that profit from all the other polluting, manufacturing things. We can do cleaner now without poisoning our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item seventy-one?
Move approval of item seventy-one, water testing.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor. Stark. Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Uh, that item, uh, passed unanimously. There'll be no busi- further business for this council. Our meeting is adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone.